You with us Christina? Yep.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Fantastic.
Can you hear me?
Yep, yep. So roll call. Yeah, so at least we're gonna do a roll call for the alternate.
Okay, and this now has. In favor? In favor of the alternate vote?
I think she said yeah.
Oh, she's not here.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Summers?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Prusak?
Yes.
Mr. Lawler?
Yes.
And it's unanimous.
And do we have anybody here this evening for present to speak? Nobody? Alright, so we're gonna move on to new business.
I, I, I would like to public speak.
Okay, who do we have here?
So it's Nick Tella, Myrtle Road.
How you doing there?
So I want to speak in, um, in light of the, uh, library board budget that may be presented, uh, tonight. And just a concern, um, so overall, I think the budget will be proposed is, uh, it meets the satisfaction of being able to maintain repairs appropriately. Um, but my biggest concern is that we're gonna have personnel, um, budgets without us knowing truly how many hours each position's gonna get, other than the director and co-director that you'll see. Um, we don't know exactly how many hours each of the other positions are gonna be getting or the per hour, because there was some situations where if, uh, like an assistant too, I believe it was, was to maintain 12 hours and we gave them an increase in salary, it could be like $27 an hour. Or they maintain the same rate, but more at, we don't know any, any of that. Uh, and that's my concern is I think that, um, the Board of Finance should recommend to the library board to be able to clarify this stuff to support, uh, the dollar amounts that they're requesting, that we're requesting for the salaries. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Do we have anybody else for, uh, present to speak? No? Okay, so we'll now move on to new business. First thing we have on our agenda, the request for funds to replace the furnace at Wellington Hill Firehouse, uh, Tom Snyder, Chief of.
Yeah, so we, uh, I appreciate you guys who put me on the agenda to play. Um, we had our furnace serviced at the firehouse and we were told that, uh, the main furnace, not the main furnace, or the middle furnace, I'll call it, um, is failing and emitting CO in the building. Um, so we have three furnaces in the building. One is for the apparatus bay, one is for the meeting room, and one is for the main area where we, uh, congregate and have offices. That's the one that's failing. Um, so I did include that and I included Peter in the, uh, uh, email and request in the conversation here to get funding to, I did send you guys a quote, um, to get funding to replace that furnace. It is kind of an emergency because we're in the middle of winter, it was summertime, it wouldn't be a big deal, but, uh, uh, we could certainly wait, but then I thought of all the things that we could, uh, um, go through, like putting it in our budget or into a CIP request, which doesn't need to CIP request, uh, requirements. And, um, both the budget process and the CIP process would just take too long. I mean, it's again, we're in the middle of winters here and we have a furnace that's failing. Um, so I, I, our president James Knight here, uh, met with the, uh, furnace repair guy and all the details, he can give a little bit more on it.
So, so speaking with, uh, um, who's the representative from Homestead? He said the furnace was manufactured in 1995, which makes it 29 years old. And, uh, yeah, um, the furnace is at its life expectancy and it's unrepairable. Um, also that furnace, as well as the offices, he says it heats, it also heats our kitchen, our bathrooms, which have a lot of plumbing in it as well, which we can't really afford for the likes to freeze up there. Also, uh, talking to the tech, I was at, um, I asked him how pertinent it is and he said it's very, he said the next thing is it's, it's complete failure. It, it will not work, um, at this point. The heat exchangers track. So once the, uh, fan kicks on, it draws excess air from the furnace, which can cause, which can draw the CO2 from the burn chamber into the building. So.
I have a couple of questions for you. Did you get any other quotes other than from Homestead?
We did not get any quotes. Uh, they, they did the service January 18th, which was a couple of weeks ago. Um, and then once he got back, he gave us the results. He did, uh, all three of our buildings. Um, I mean, it was, it was kind of important to get the ball rolling and also he used pretty, uh, pretty competitive. Last year, we had a furnace in the same building replaced and that was almost $20,000. So 20,000. Um, and we have not gotten any more quotes.
Yeah, I found today that the laws actually say that there's going to be any maintenance done over $5,000. That three quotes need to be, uh, submitted for that. So what I suggest is that you could get two more quotes.
Alright.
Okay, so that we can move this forward. Uh, one of the things I would suggest as well is when you're getting the quotes, is if you make sure that the equipment that they're going to be supplying you with, that Homestead is able to service that equipment. Because I know in doing a company, uh, business with companies before, then not everybody services for every single model that's out there. So you might want to find that out as well.
Yeah.
And then the other question that I have for you too is, you might look at this, you know, for the next time that you come in, is you have two maintenance, uh, lines in your budget and a miscellaneous budget one too. And I don't know if you have any other funds that you're able to move from any other lines to be able to cover the expense of those, of that furnace.
Yeah, we checked into that. You know, we won't be able to absorb the $90,000 bill out of our budget, we just didn't budget for that at all. You know, nowhere near that much to, to change, have an emergency purchase like that. That's why I came to you.
Okay.
Because we can't look over light items and stuff. We shut our lights off and have heat.
Okay, so you'll be able to get two more quotes?
Yep.
Okay, and then next week is, is our next budget meeting? You know, schedule with us to come in then, you know, present the budgets and everything, we can move forward from there to the quotes.
Sounds good.
Okay, thanks.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
You have three furnaces and one of them's been replaced by ARPA funding and the third one, how old is that one?
It's, it's the same. Yeah, they, they're on side by side. It's, it's the same furnace. Well, same age.
Same age.
Yeah.
So you know, I'm not inviting trouble or anything, but is, you know, uh, given that it's 30 years old, did you say?
Yep.
Is it, does it make sense to quote two?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
I'm guessing it'd be better than doubling. I mean, I'm just wondering.
Right. Yeah, I can, I can ask the technician and the sale, or the manager of Homestead and see what their recommendations are. I mean.
Did they happen to look at them and say there's no cracking or leaking?
Yeah, yeah, he discarded all our furnaces.
And he said they're okay.
Between the three properties, there's five furnaces and, um, this one's the only one that has, you know, major problems. So.
Would Homestead, Sted quote furnaces that they couldn't service?
Um, I, I doubt it.
Because are they, you're under contract with them, right?
We're under contract with them for, yeah, for our annual service and I had a hard time with, um, getting someone to do an annual, you know, contract with us. Because the training center across the street is a commercial unit. So a lot of places, I checked four different places and a lot of people won't touch a commercial unit because they don't supply parts. So they won't do a service contract for something they don't have parts. Um, also, you know, the house that we rent out, that's electric force hot air. So we ran into a lot of people who won't even service that, uh, furnace. So Homestead, um, talking with the guys, they, they came out and there's, they said there's not much anything they won't service. So I mean, they, they've looked at, you know, residential, commercial units, uh, electric units. Um, they do the central air, so they do, they do just about everything.
So you feel you can get two, two other quotes, uh, or?
Uh, yeah.
Just dying trying.
A few different places for that, yeah, for that furnace, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. So, um, this is. Okay, thanks a lot, thanks. Alright, next up on the agenda is, uh, animal control.
That's me, Jen. I think I've met mostly on the office very often. Um, my budget is gonna stay exactly the same as it has the last two years. I, the way I look at it, I was talking to Donna and I'm like, it's worked for us. Why fix it or why change it if it's not? Um, there is gonna be some repairs needed to the pound in the near future, but we can try and move a little bit from other places if we need. Um, just little things like a piece of gutter that needs to be fixed, you know, some, I, there will be some bigger repairs, we try next year, but.
Yeah, well, there was a talk at CFP last night about all the.
Yeah.
The state of Connecticut.
They're giving a five-year period where everything can be updated and fixed. So it's stuff that my grandfather had before, that's not gonna be any longer. So, um, I don't see any of it being like needed to be done now. So if we're going forward, we'll keep the budget right where it is.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for?
Uh, yeah, I, I just wanted to ask about, since I'm hearing some talk about, um, you know, the viability and the flexibility. And I guess I just wanted a little background. Do you have any numbers, like average, average number of animals you have housed there?
Um, so last year, I think we only had six impounds throughout the year. Um, this year we're up to five already, but that's expected with the way everything's going. Um, people dumping animals have been increased.
Is that an average?
But yeah, it's gonna be probably, you know, we'll stay under 10, 10 a year. Last year we were, you know, fills, the heating was a little higher. We had a dog housed there for, you know, extended period of time. He's now not there. So if there's no animals, the heat's down low enough to where, you know, pipes won't freeze and stuff, but I keep it. I keep the electricity and heat as low as I can, so we're not using the oil and propane, I think it's cooking up there. Um, but yeah, I think it's, it'll stay about, okay, about that amount.
And then I was curious how much traffic you have for people who are interested in adopting dogs.
That's the hard part. There's not much traffic. So we put the dogs on the roadside. So people go into the dump on the weekends, we'll see them. Um, you know, we post them on social media and wherever we can. I try to share them throughout. I do Ashford and Stafford also, so I post them on those pages. So we have a good, I mean, they're shared quite a bit. Um, right now though, nobody's adopting. I'm running into the same problem. Everyone's running into the same problem everywhere. So pounds are just overflowing. So.
So if we, if we ended, ended up being in more of a consortium approach, then, and we're already kind of in a consortium approach with you.
Yeah.
Serving several towns. Does it, when, when people have, uh, needs to sort of put out an emergency, like call for animal, you know, rescue or help? Um, do, you know, in a town like Wellington, would we, if we closed or somehow simulated with, with a neighboring town, would that reduce that kind of reaction time and help from local citizens who have?
Um, it really is, it'll be the same. I'm coming from Stafford, that's where I live. So no matter where I'm going, I'm about the same distance everywhere. So I, I'm one of those, as soon as I get the call, I'm in the car. Like my husband laughs at me because he's like, your shoes aren't even on and you're out the doors. I don't make people wait any longer than I have to. So the call comes through and I, I go. So.
It's a calling then, right?
Yeah.
Thanks, Jen.
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions? Alright, thank you, Jen. Now we'll move on to parks and recreation.
Hi, everybody. I'm Jimmy Callahan, Parks and Recreation Director. So I earned a $94,516, uh, from the town, a 0.17% decrease from last year. Um, with this being my first budget, I prepared, I wanted to focus on filling up the budget and making some of the expenses and revenue a little more realistic based on the programs I'm planning out for next year. Um, notably the yoga wellness program, uh, summer sports camp, winter camp. Um, and potential programs I'm looking at for the summer. Um, we also made a change to the winter camp, uh, winter camp this year, winter camp this year, uh, Human Services, and I decided not to run it because Christmas this year is on Wednesday and that makes it easier for parents to get childcare for that week. Um, and this year, Christmas was on a Thursday, we only had one sign up just because all the parents, they were able to arrange, uh, childcare for that week. Yeah, if anybody has questions, I'm happy to answer. And we are planning on voting the Parks and Rec Commission. I have Joe Colangelo, uh, here on moving $10,000 from the Undesignated Fund to, um, to next year's budget.
And what did you say that was in support of? Is it one of the new programs or?
So that'll be, uh, salary.
If you remember, we did that exact same.
Right.
Last year.
I do remember.
So that we could get such a good rector. We have gotten.
I, I was just wondering about some of the programs because I, I know that, um, in, especially during COVID and everything else. But, but at any rate, even before that, the youth basketball in particular was on a sharp decline from what it had been with the previous director, when it was a rousing success. And we had kids coming in from other towns and paying the fees and everything. And, um, I think we had five teams, if I'm not mistaken. Then, so I'm wondering, is that, do you see that reenlivening? I see that you're doing some stuff down at River Road, but I'm, I'm talking more about the intervirals and some of the things that sort of feed to the overall community, you know?
Yeah, so for youth basketball, uh, this year I'd say it was pretty much on track with the previous year. I do have some ideas for next year when it comes to promotion, just to get the word out a little, a little better, uh, with thinking yard signs. Uh, people driving by the school can see it. Um, I would also attribute that kind of to the, the decline of kids in school as well. I don't have those exact numbers, but um, I, I do think with the less kids, less kids interested in, in playing the basketball. Um, but definitely next year, I, I hope to see an increase in the amount of signups. I think all the coaches this year, they've done a great job and the kids are really interested. So I think that, um, next year I, I am hoping for, for more signups.
And I think that it's, you, that some things in your budget are really good initiatives, like, uh, you, you're interested in being involved yourself in a basketball camp with, with some other volunteers or some other help. I don't know that they're volunteering, uh, but, um, and that, that sounded promising and resurrecting pickleball too, which we've had a lot of citizen comments about.
Yeah, yeah.
In other cities, it's just wild. In fact, I don't know, I, there was a story just this last week about all the downtown commercial space in America that's basically a wasteland because everybody's working from home and still are. And, uh, that one of the things they're considering is indoor pickleball courts and other sports inside high rises.
Yeah.
So, you know, I'm just kinda wondering about that.
So yeah, pickleball, I'm looking at late spring, I'd say at Home Memorial School, after, uh, basketball wraps up and they have some more gym space. Um, and then, uh, possibly a fall session too, depending on how the man goes for the first one. But I am, I considered running it at the basketball court at the park, but I figured we have the ARPA project, it's gonna be starting soon. So construction would mess it up. So I think fall school is gonna be the best bet for that.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, James. Next on the agenda, we have human services.
Hi, everyone. I'm Karen Colte, Human Services Director. Um, I am asking for, um, salary increases. Um, ARPA funds were paid for senior center coordinator for the first year, second year, and now they're gonna be finished. So I need to be able to pick that salary up. And apparently that was agreed upon in the ARPA. And then I also want to increase the hours of my assistant from eight hours a week to 15 hours a week.
So I have one question right now. So the senior center coordinator before part, but what does a fully volunteer position, wasn't it?
It was, and my understanding is it was one of the seniors who was 90 years old that was doing it. Um, so she was doing everything she could and she was opening up the center and closing the center. And she decided, I'm, wanna retire, I'm done. So, and the position was.
That might wait.
I know, 90 years old, she's thinking. So the ARPA thing happened before I came along and the agreement was that ARPA would pay for it the first year, pay half the second year and the third year quarter, I think. And then they would, um, the town would pick it up. That's my understanding of it. Donna can correct me if I'm wrong.
Alright, yeah, I'm just wondering about one thing. Um, I'm not really familiar about the structure over at the senior center. Do they have a board there?
Yes.
They do have a board there. Okay, now is that word volunteer?
I don't know the answer to that question. I would have to get back to you on that. This is my third week sitting in that chair, so.
Okay.
There are final ones. Yeah.
Alright, any other questions? Okay, so at this time, we will be going out to the library. Is there a question?
Um, well, I just am wondering if we can have a little more information about the, the increase in hours and have some justification. I, I, I just I'm wondering.
Yep. Um, so right now, my assistant works eight hours. She really takes care of the food pantry, which she's doing an absolutely phenomenal job at and it's amazing up there. We have a lot more people coming in, which is wonderful because there's more food in there. Um, and I'm planning on doing fundraisers and we've got a lot of youth programs that I want to get started and initiate. And I, I'm only one person, so I can't do all of that by myself without some help. Um, Nan is over at the senior center taking care of that piece of it. But now that we're gonna be adding programs for the youth and creating that kind of stuff, I'm gonna need a little help with all that stuff. And fundraisers, those will be done in the evening. So in case I need help with that stuff, I'll have backup. Which, by the way, we have fundraiser coming up, so you know, it's gonna be a comedy night. So you'll hear more about it.
Awesome.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Could I ask you, Karen, would you just go over the senior center position, what it does? Because I think it's more than what it was when it was a volunteer and I just, if you could just sort of outline some of what that job does.
Um, so we have regular programming and this is for January. So these programs are run every month. There's no additional programs to plan for January. It was the end of the month. So reoccurring once per week unless noted. So they're doing line dancing, cornhole tai chi a couple of times a week, craft workshop setback, craft social, men's pool, chair volleyball, savers trip one time a month, Walmart trip one time a month, lunch brunch trip one time a month, lunch with a good book one time a month. Wellington seniors, um, are doing a bread distribution every week. Um, the executive board meets once a month. Um, and then there's also a general meeting one time a month. And they're scheduling like a casino trip in February. Um, I can send you all a copy of this. Um, and then some of the other projects that, that Nan is working on is AARP Community Challenge Grant, Connecticut ARPA Senior Centers Grant, the Button Shop Beautiful Monthly Newsletter, durable medical equipment inventory, preparing for weekly programming, research and planning for upcoming programs, research on possible upcoming trips, keeping up to date on issues that affect seniors in Wellington, maintaining certification as choice counselor, brainstorming outreach ideas for the Wellington community and ongoing communication and networking with other town and county senior centers.
Okay.
I didn't see it take a breath. I did, yeah.
And then does this person also assist with the myriad, um, uh, military service center down there?
Um, that I don't know the answer to. So I can find that out. Um, I had her write down everything she does because I was like, I don't know everything that you do. So, so she wrote down what she does, but I will ask her about the military services.
No pickleball?
Not yet. Jimmy's working on it. We will be working on that.
Any other questions?
So I take it you want to play pickleball?
No.
So should we sign you up?
No, it just seems to me that they should have their own pickleball court there. Plus, I'm not ready for the senior center anyways.
I told you there are.
Well, I don't know, maybe Matt Boy.
I, I just thought, I could just thought of another question.
Sure.
Um, the, it was probably two years ago now, the ARPA Commission funded, um, I, I can't remember what it was called. Um, the, the, I know it's like We Are Community Cares or something like that. Um, that was like $5,000 and it was, uh, to institute this volunteer system where, um, residents could help seniors in town. And I'm, I'm just wondering if you know the status of that. Um.
Um, I do not, but I can find out and get back to you.
Okay. That'd be great.
We have any more questions? Alright, for library. Do you have anybody here from library?
Yes, I'm sorry. I thought I had a couple of minutes to run to the other room. Sorry. Hi, for those of you who don't know me on the BF, I'm Karen Ann Caldwell. I am Chair of the Library Board. Um, we have a budget that we've presented that we, the directors were trying to keep as close to an inflationary increase as we could. So even though the inflation rate's going down, there's still a lot of things that are more expensive than they were a year or two ago. So we're hoping it's not too much of an increase. Um, building maintenance went up. We've got it up by 28.38%. Um, because that line item had actually not been much last, the last two years. But the building's getting older. We do need a little more work on it. Um, the, um, building repair also had to go up for the same reason. Under the maintenance, we have $7,500 that is basically set. We can't change that. That is our elevator, our fire, um, response, our water testing, our water treatment, our water softener. All of those things are set. And we put aside some money for heating and electrician in case repairs come up. If we could do them in-house, if we could find somebody, um, we could keep the cost lower, but sometimes these prices get really high. They put beautiful lights from the ceiling in the library and then when one goes out, it costs us a fortune to have somebody get up there and fix it. And it's, some of, some of the maintenance is just really high. And, um, we do have a custodian working for us now, who in addition to cleaning, has been doing some minor repairs. So that has helped us with some of these. Um, we have electricity that we kept flat and propane that went up. Um, that, we don't know what's gonna happen with that. We kept the electricity flat, um, but if it goes up, that may go up. We raised propane by the amount that we thought would be the cost with the way propane prices are going up. Um, there were some decreases though. We changed our internet company. Our internet company gave us a deal, so the internet cost is now down over 10%. It's down 12%. Um, there were, um, decreases in the phone, there were decreases in the security. Um, there were decreases in purchases from patron software, um, outside resources, which are, um, things that we join like the, um, library consortium and some other groups, and some of those fees actually went down. So that gave us. Library Consortium and some other groups and some of those fees actually went down, so that gave us a um, little bit of a cut. The biggest change to our budget, and it's not the biggest cost change because we simply, we we are asking for pay raises. The main reason for asking for pay raises is that minimum wage goes up, it's. If minimum wage goes from fifteen to fifteen point six nine, is it really fair for the person who's making sixteen to not get a raise? So we did institute some raises, but we also restructured. We currently have two co-directors. We are going to an assistant director and a director. Now, getting a director has been an issue because we don't pay much. So the budget for that is fifty six thousand, which is the bare minimum that the state says that we should be offering to a library director. The assistant director, we kept at a flat for what the co-director is now. So that totaled up to an extra ten thousand above the pay raises, but we had a. Slot for a page that was almost fifteen thousand and that position is currently not filled. There is somebody else who has been covering it. And so we went ahead and deleted that line item and put ten thousand of that fifteen into um, the director. Then the other five thousand. What we decided to do was, we have a programmer now who's working twelve hours a week, but. Programming particularly starting in the summer when we have our summer programs becomes much more hectic, much many more hours. So we added that extra five thousand to the programmer's salary, which would up them from twelve hours to um. Basically about eighteen hours, a little less than eighteen hours. That. Could change. Um, we don't know if the current programmer we have, who is working twelve hours, would like to stay over the summer and up those hours to eighteen. Um, we don't know if that person would like to stay at twelve hours. We don't know if that person is leaving. Um, but it gives us a little bit of leeway. If we do have to hire somebody new, we could offer them either twelve or eighteen hours a week. And if they only took the twelve, that extra five thousand could be put back into the um. Page line item, which would allow for a page for six hours a week. So that is our biggest change is a restructuring and the fact that. We cannot hire a director below this, we're not gonna get anybody, I should say, if we offer below what the state considers to be minimum. Even at that, we are offering. So little that we don't even know if it's a feasible salary. It has been difficult to keep a director since the first people left and um. We just have hopes that going back to a director and assistant director position will work out.
Was that off?
That's everything.
Okay, I was just wondering, uh, what exactly as far as the restructuring of the uh, staff went? Were any duties changed amongst the clerks and the uh, directors?
The clerks stay exactly the same. The processor and the programmer would still have the same jobs. Um, the director and assistant director. Right now, since we have co-directors, they're basically both doing everything we would have to. Um, specify what exactly we would expect from a director, what we would expect from an assistant director, um, but. We don't even know if this is gonna be approved yet, so if we can get the money to hire a director, that will be the first thing we do is come up with. What we expect each one of them to do.
Anybody have any questions?
I do, a couple. One um. One is, uh, well, first, my first question is for Donna. Is there a presumption yet in the budget for year-over-year pay increases? And what is it?
There is no presumption for a increase for next year until the budget on a union contract is finalized.
Is this the same one that's been hanging or is this a different one?
This is, this is a different one. We were on the third year of a three-year contract. That's going to end on June thirty of this year, twenty four.
When is the deadline for negotiations? I hesitate to ask, I mean for. For a contract.
Well, that's something they want a year beyond when the.
No, I know, I know, but that was unprecedented. I mean, I I'd like to. Okay. So. This year was two point seven five, right?
Correct.
So can we presume it's around that?
We can presume anything we want. I I think that would be a a a big baseline. Uh, but before contract evocation start, we had, we saw it in hurt from the union at all.
Okay.
One thing I would like to point out is the library is not part of the union. And when we compare our salaries to the unionized employees in town, we are even with the pay raise that we've requested. Below what people in town are making. So yes, we did request, I believe it's a four point three percent increase. Um, increase as opposed to a two point seven five, but what we're really trying to do here is see if we can normalize our employee salaries with comparable. Um, salaries in town.
That that's what I'm trying to get the context on because almost all of them have at least a five point three percent increase. And some of them, including the clerk, I I don't know, I I might have missed it if you said those hours were going up. But it's a, it's a nineteen percent increase year over year.
But that is because one of the clerks up to her hours to twenty seven and a half hours, which is basically twice.
Okay, so that is more hours.
Right, and without the director's increase, I worked out that all the other increases were a four point three. Um, that was my math.
The assistant to position is going at forty percent for what what's that?
That was the one I was just talking about, the programmer.
Narrative to chart.
That is the programmer that we are hoping to up from twelve to eighteen hours, so that is why that went up so much. And as I said, if if we don't get someone in who wants to work those eighteen hours and only wants to work the twelve, we can take that extra money, put it back in the page. Line item and hire a page for six hours a week.
When we had a the director before we went to the co-director system, the director left. Do you remember what that salary was at?
I I wouldn't know because I actually just started on the board as he was leaving. So I would know.
Okay, I'm just curious because we we've had the the co-directors are not MLS, right?
Right.
Certified, so. So if we're going to a director that that has credentials like that, that is a different ballgame.
Completely, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay. I'm sorry. So um, you were talking about, you know, looking at a comparison of the library staff with other departments. The increases of pay in those departments. Have you looked at other towns, like especially small towns, to see what they're paying their library staff?
More than us. For the surrounding small towns, we are paying less than Tallent, we're paying less than Ashford. We are, I can't say we're considerably lower. We're considerably lower to some of the the other towns, but we are lower than anybody around us here.
Are are you able to send me that information?
Yeah, I I we, I can dig it out of the files and uh, get it to you.
Okay, I appreciate that. Any other questions? No, no other questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right, now on the agenda, we have correspondence. We have any correspondence from anyone? You got anything else that you didn't send us? No, I do not. You got it all. Alright, so.
Yeah, could I, could I bring up something about that?
Definitely.
I know that we're we're, you know, off to a a little bit of a slow start here, but is it possible to give them? You know, the um, the the budgets, you know, the budgets to us, you know, hopefully like three days in advance.
We we had tried that and the library, I know she was inundated with emails regarding what was going on over there. She didn't get hers swept till four o'clock today.
No, I know that. I know that we're off to a little bit of a slow start.
Donna and I were talking about that.
But I'm, and I'm thinking the selectman budget and the V O E budget, we should have at least a week ahead. Which, since we're on a four-day week, should be the Thursday before the meeting when that comes up, I think. It's just too much to take in on the fly.
Yeah.
I don't think we have as many of questions as we need to have during the process, so. That's just me.
No.
And uh, is it possible we can also get the agenda even though it goes out? Because it helps us know. When you're filing it rather than keeping them, you know, continuing to look for it. You know what I mean?
Yeah, see, the reason, I mean, it says to put it out the day before to send it to the clerk's office. I mean, that's recommended. And the past couple of the last meeting, we were still getting uh, requests to be put onto the agenda.
Yeah. We usually, we usually, you can send it out sooner than than the last minute though, and I'm I mean to the board, just like send us. Send us that on on email when you do, but because we don't know exactly when it's going. It used to commonly go out on Tuesdays. So and now it is is like going out in the afternoon late, so.
Anything else for correspondence? And anybody for present to speak?
I guess do we, just wanna mention we we fixed the our budget calendar.
Yes, we did. For those in the pack today. Yeah.
Yeah, there.
So we moved, um, because we had the board very conflicted for.
Budget meeting.
Budget hearing, so we we just, we just moved everything up one day.
No, we moved it later.
Yeah, we moved it up Tuesday and Wednesday, right? Yeah, from the eighth to the ninth.
And then. Other departments, making sure that there were no conflict in uh.
So we have, so the dates are for for those, those in attendance or those who haven't seen this. April tenth for the budget hearing, um, and that's at the Old Town Hall and April twenty fourth for the annual town meeting. Those are both Wednesdays and we commonly always have those meetings on Tuesdays, so it's a little bit of a wrench in the works to make it work this year. But we we had, we can't, we're not approving this until you're. Regular meeting.
Correct. Until weeks.
Yeah.
That was my question.
Good.
Anything for Good and Wealth there?
Oh, I was, there's something else I wanted to ask. Did you, did you guys finish the budget letter and send that out? And if so, can the board see it? Because we probably should have. Signed up on it in some way or at least seen it, seen what you guys did. We basically moved last meeting to uh, for you and Pete to collaborate and and get that up quickly, so we weren't holding up.
And we did collaborate and we did get it out quickly.
But we didn't see it, so I have no idea what you're asking people to do.
We, 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 we should send you a copy.
Thank you. And and all my friends and all my friends.
Fire chief's got it today.
They did?
Yeah.
Wow, could I see your copy? I'm just a bit player.
Hey, do we have anything else?
You got a hand up.
Do we have a president to speak? Use a hand on iPhone.
Yes, it's it's me tell what president speak to happen. Or no?
No, you're breaking, you're breaking up.
He's asking if you can speak.
Yes. Is it appropriate for a president to speak or no?
Yeah, yes, we're speaking. We got here all of them again.
Alright, yeah, no, I I just wanted to follow up with with what was said. I mean, overall, you know. I think the the increase in salaries is appropriate. I just think going at it. With no plan is kind of reckless a- and. You know, I think Human Services did a great job being able to identify and 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 say, hey, this is why we need which, you know, the money they're requesting. Um, I just wish the library board would be able to define exactly why we need what we need and such, so, thank you.
I don't know if he has name and address. That was.
It was Nutella.
But T E L L A, thank you. And.
Yep.
Address there.
Myrtle Road. Myrtle Road.
There was a lot of present just.
Alright, thank you, Nick. And do we have one more person to speak? Alright, so do we have a motion for adjournment?
I'll do the Peter. Do we have a second? Well, is it favors?
Nah, I gotta let somebody have some of the.